...at 5:30. So occasionally, we may be running a little bit behind, but it's a good opportunity for the City Council to all get caught up on some of the current events and things like that. So, we will do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lilly?
Here.
Mycel?
Here.
Ruston?
Here.
King?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
Here. Okay, like I was saying, we are...this was our first pre-council. We want to just try to all be on the same page and talk about some events and issues that come up between meetings so that we can talk about it. And if there's any questions, any kind of backstories, things like that. That way, the council is all informed as we get here. So, if everybody is looking at their agenda, the consent agenda is attached. You all have that in your pockets from the 11-1825 regular council meeting. So, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd like the motion.
All in favor? And the consent agenda passes? Department head reports. Let's see. Dale is here, Jennifer is here, the fire chief is here. Let's start with Dale and Environmental, please.
Get my slide show out. So, plant rehab's on track. Hopefully, we'll have one side of that up and operating by March. So, everything's still moving along, everything's on track. They're almost finished with the electrical building, so they're pouring the top on it this week. So, the entire structure is made out of concrete with poured walls, so it should last a lifetime. So, we shouldn't have to look at that after it's complete. The guys and us, we've had some issues with the BP lift station, which is right across from McDonald's. So, anyway, it's got a two-inch service line running across the road because it's a forest main, so we've got some issues with that. We're trying to get repaired before tractor supply comes in. We got the crane truck back out of the shop, so it's been a little bit of a nightmare. We've been having to run our diesel pump because we wasn't able to pull the electrical pumps up to repair those. But we've got all that back in order, everything seems to be going good. We're just moving along with the plant rehab.
So, is that what they were working on today in front of McDonald's and then on the other side of the street? I saw them with the little trailer.
Right, so that's the jetter machines.
Right.
We're trying to see if the pipes collapsed or if it was just stocked up. So, they're working on that and still working on it after 3:00 today. So, we've...they're videoing it after they get it cleaned out to see if it's collapsed or whatever's going on, which it's been there probably 50 years, so.
Any questions for Dale and Environmental?
Do we know when tractor supply's supposed to open?
Not right off the top of my head.
Is there gonna be a back exit there?
It wasn't in the plan. I mean, that would've been an awesome thing for them to do, so they could've had Ingress and Egress out of the Wind Dixie parking lot, the old Wind Dixie parking lot. I mean, if it was me, I would've, you know, got with the property owner and come to some kind of resolution with that. Al got it, they give them permission to exit onto the state right away like it is, so they followed all the procedures. But I'm like everybody else, I wish it had a turning lane.
Yeah, that's gonna be a problem.
I would think especially with the...
But the fire chief busy.
Big trucks, you know, to load and unload and stuff like that. Another thing about tractor supplies, they did come before the...
ZBA.
ZBA about a variance for the size sign that they requested. And in our sign ordinance, I can't remember exactly the size.
So, they requested a 30 feet in height. Sign or sign ordinance is 20 feet in height. So, that got denied. And also, they wanted a larger sign, so we had regulations on that, so that also got denied. And then, that's something, you know, the planning commission and everybody's gonna work on, maybe our sign ordinance, so we can get the signs down a little lower where they're visible as you're driving through town. It'd be a little different if you live close to the interstate and you had to have a tall sign, but most of our traffic's...
Where's the sign gonna be?
It's gonna be out at the West College Street, out at the entrance.
So, 20 feet back could possibly be a landing spot.
Well, I mean, 20 feet, you're still...it's just gonna be on a 20-foot pole, but the sign'll be up in the air.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Fire department?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we've had a pretty busy couple of weeks. We've, as you know, we've been working on the apparatus. We finally got all the equipment installed on it. Yesterday, we had represented the manufacturer, come down last night, he gave us our final in-service training on it. So, as of today, truck's pretty much in service. He requested that we bring it, it's out front, if anyone wants to look at it after meeting. Pretty much, that's it, we're rocking and rolling with the truck. We've got the other three pieces of apparatus moved on the west side of town in the public works facility, so that's worked out good. So, we've got those three out on that side of town. Pretty much, just getting everything ready for Christmas, getting ready for the parades and the holidays and everyday stuff like inspections and things like that. Better than that, nothing special.
We will all go out and smell that new fire truck smell after the meeting because we're excited about it.
How do the trucks fit in the facility up there? The stuff you put up there?
On back out there, yeah. We got three pieces in there. It's pretty good.
On the backside, there's a big roll-up door. And I think the plan was to back two pieces of equipment in, and I don't know what the third piece is, but that is a huge building.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's just temporary. It's to give him, you know, the fire department, a place to park some of his stuff, but we also have equipment on that side of town, you know? The goal is to move forward and have a new fire station over there at some point, but...
Well, it is good to have that on one side of town, it's good it's right there by the jail, too. Oh, yeah, yeah, sounds good. It's a good location, good.
Any other questions for the fire chief? Thank you. Ms. Jennifer in the library?
All right, so our December stats, we did $51,425.15 worth of services in the month of October. That is up from last year. November stats aren't up yet, obviously, because it's only the second. We had approximately 914 visitors for November come through the library. A few things that we're offering during December, we will have...be providing a free gift wrapping station this year. Wrapping paper, tape, scissors, bows, anything like that that you would need to wrap a present. If you're wrapping presents and you run out of tape, come on down to the library, finish up your package. Someone who has kids running around, who wants to like just bring some stuff and wrap some stuff out away from prime night, we don't care, just come on in and wrap your gifts, and we've got a table for you and lots of stuff. So, we will also show two Christmas movies while school is out for Christmas, December 22nd and 23rd at 2:00 PM. We are still making those choices on what would be the best movies to show during that time, but you can always call closer to the time to Christmas and we will have those titles ready for you. So, that's it.
So, your gift wrap station, or is that something that you guys take donations of gift wrap for, or have you had someone sponsor that for you guys?
We have not had anyone sponsor that. We have had people donate some wrapping paper. We've had a few people come in, give us $5 to purchase things like that. It's just, this is the second year we did it, and last year, we started like the 15th of the month last year. So, we're really jumping into it this year. You know, anyone that wants to donate materials or monetarily, we are more than happy to take that and we will put it toward that station.
Okay, great. Any questions for the library for Ms. Jennifer?
Do y'all wrap for us? Even if I bring you my own paper?
I like to wrap, Kim, I'll wrap your presents.
Okay, I would bring you my paper.
Okay, senior center, Ally?
All right, so for community services, Christmas in Columbia is happening, the trees are all out in the park. We will do snow on every Friday night in December. So, the parade is this Friday, the tour of homes, the beautification boards tour of homes is this Saturday, and the artist market is Friday night and Saturday, so. And then, for the senior center, we served 540 meals in November. That is down significantly due to all the federal cutbacks. We know that we will continue to have meals through the end of December, but we are not sure beyond that whether the funding will be available. So, when I know, you guys will know. There, we had 75 people attend our Thanksgiving lunch at the senior center, and we're really thankful for all of the gifts of non-perishable food and fresh vegetables from the Methodist Church and from various people through the community. So, it's been great to have all of that. For Green Hall, there are about six things happening at the Green Hall during December. The chamber meeting is this Thursday. If anybody can attend that, that would be great. Then, the 10th, the artist market is this weekend. Smith Douglas is doing a Christmas party, and then we have some of the Christmas in the park.
And on Friday night, I'll be selling the beautification, the tour of homes tickets if anybody's interested, I'll be at the artist market.
Are there trees still available at anyone's...
There are 10 trees still available.
Okay, so...
If anybody would like to sponsor a tree.
Okay, awesome. And they can just get in touch with you if they...
Absolutely.
Awesome. Okay, any questions for Ally or Christmas?
Can you buy tickets to the tour of homes online?
Yes, you can.
Through the website?
Online, Eventbrite, or they are available at City Hall, Main Street Forest, or they're gonna be available at the door, it's a wristband. There is tentatively a weather plan because there's rain in the forecast for the parade on Friday, so we will sort of make that decision at 10-ish we talked about, we'll just sort of see. You know, it's rained before and then it lifts and everything's great, but I hate to cancel because then you have to try to worry about rescheduling it and things like that, and we want to try to get it done. It's gonna be a fun weekend, so everybody do a non-rain dance.
Ally, are people getting the food out of the box still? Okay, good. So, we got enough to keep it going?
Okay, if there's not any more questions for Ally, moving on to item six on the agenda, this is board reports. I don't know if any boards met.
Beutechukin.
Yeah.
We met, they discussed what we're doing for the tour of homes and the decorations.
There's five homes on the tour, yeah.
One at the lake, Magnolia Manor, and then all three on Beacon Drive.
Yeah, that's exciting. And the police will be there to help with traffic control because coming over the mountain on Highway 30 right there, it, you know, the Beacon Drive comes in right there, it's just, there's kind of a blind spot. So, the police, they're going to have someone there to help with, just maybe sit in the car with their lights on or whatever, just to bring attention to that intersection. Any other boards? I don't think anything, anyone else met. Okay, well, we do need to appoint some new members to the zoning board of adjustments. This is a five-member board plus two supernumerary...I can't say that, supernumerary appointments. This board is a board that meets just a few times a year as needed when someone puts in a request for a variance, or if the zoning board has somehow denied their request or their application and they're appealing it. So, this is a board of citizens that serve a three-year term. So, we didn't have enough members on this board for a long time, and then there were some planning and zoning members that were on it that really it was a conflict. So, these are all new members other than Mr. Glasgow, who has served for a while. So, I will go over the names of the people that I would like to appoint, that I have spoken with, that are willing to serve the community in this capacity. Richard Glasgow, who is the current chairman, his term would expire 7/19 of '28. Mary Dunaway, who is a resident and real estate agent, has graciously agreed to do it, her term would also expire 7/19 of '28. Edwin Acheson is a long-upstanding business owner here in Columbia. His term would be 7/19 of '28. Amy Dixon is a resident, she has served on the planning and zoning board for the last five years, I would say, and recently came off of that board, but would love to serve in this capacity because it's not quite as daunting, and she has a little more time. That her term would also be 7/19 of '28. Paula Wheeler is a resident here and retired, and her term would expire 12/2 of '28. A supernumerary would be Alan Reynolds as a city employee, his term would be 6/18 of '28. And Robert Irwin, who is a resident here and a teacher at C-Tech, has graciously accepted that, and his term would be 12/2 of '28. Those supernumeraries would also vote if there was ever not a quorum, or, you know, someone had to move or something like that, they would, they're, they kind of would step into their place. So, do I have a motion to accept these appointments for the ZBA board?
I'll make that motion soon.
Okay, all in favor? It passed unanimously? So, thank you. I know Paula, you're here, I don't see anybody else, thank you for serving, we appreciate it, we're excited to have you and your expertise on this board. I would like to say, while we're talking about boards and things like that, these are all volunteers of our community, and I think that it's very important that we try to get as many volunteers from different areas, different areas of expertise. And, you know, our city could not function and could not continue moving forward without these volunteers. I mean, we just, we can't do it by ourselves, so I'm always thankful for volunteers. Anyway, so thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an architectural review committee. This is a property at 110 South Main Street. Michelle Faulner is the property owner, I'm sorry. So, you all have noticed that there has been some renovation and things like that of both sides of that building. This is her new updated mockup of the storefront. Anytime something in Columbia, the facade changes, the storefront changes, they are supposed to come before the architectural review board with plans, and the architectural review board has that opportunity to look at this and vote on this. So, would you like to do a presentation or talk or anything like that?
I mean, I, the picture, I think speaks for itself. The two side panels, it's a man door in the middle, and the two side panels will be automatic running on Main Street, Liberty Day, Cowboy Day, it'll be an indoor/outdoor use of the facility, but I think the picture speaks for itself. Do y'all have any questions, anybody? I know y'all got this, I think at the painting of the week.
Yeah, I just wondered, they're gonna roll back like on tracks, kind of like Station 31 is the only place that I can think about.
I don't, I'm not familiar with that, so I can't...
Will they, I think what she wants to say is, will they roll up and be flat, or will they roll up into themselves like a...
No, they're gonna roll up and be flat.
And be flat, okay.
Motorized track.
They'll just roll back like?
Be flat on our ceiling.
Okay, perfect. Um, go ahead, sorry.
Will the middle door roll away, Michelle?
No, the middle is a man door.
When both of them roll up, it'll be...
Yes, it'll be a, it'll be a station man door.
And I guess the inside of the doors be like an open, like air patio, is that what that is? Where the, that brown floor is, is that like a hallway?
No, no, it's one, it'll be one big open room. We have a wall now that's built, I don't know if anybody has walked by, that's a temporary wall, this, because of the fronts.
So, it'll be a fully open space?
Fully open space.
What will the flooring be?
It's where we're salvaging the original hardwoods, just like we did in the...
So, how will, if those doors roll up, that it'll be hardwood all the way to the sidewalk right there, or will it...
Yes, the hardwood will come up to the, I mean, the, right where the tracks are, that will be some, it'll be metal right there in the track area, and then there'll be some marble right inside the door with our logo.
Oh, okay.
The building's still brick on the inside, isn't it, just like...
One wall.
Okay.
One wall, exposed brick.
What's the other?
It's...
What's the name?
Not even cheap rock. I think it's piecemeal from about 100 years.
So, I guess the top and the right is the original brick, is that right, Michelle?
Yes, we're not changing any of that. Really, the only thing that's changing is the glass and a new awning.
What were you gonna do there? You said you changed it?
No, I said we're not.
We're not.
The glass is the only thing changing, the bricks remaining the same, and a new awning.
Any other questions? I would like to just say, you know, the downtown area is a somewhat historical downtown area, and the reason we want to try to always get approvals for architectural design and things like that is we want to maintain the charm and historical facade look to keep everything aesthetically pleasing. So, we don't want anything to, you know, be so outside the norm of the rest of the buildings. I would just like to, you know, buildings or sites exhibiting skilled craftsmanship or design that are or will likely be considered historical, I'm not saying that this is not, I'm just, you know, this isn't a historical building per se, you know, but we do want to try to keep the historical charm of our downtown area, so...
I agree completely. I think it's a facelift.
We've spent quite a sum of money making sure that the interior of the buildings were brought back to the period, and the flooring, which I don't know if any of you've ever looked at flooring, but, you know, you're, this flooring is twice as thick, so being able to resource that, where there was rotten areas in there where it was, wasn't cared for very well, has been quite expensive to resource that period, that age of wood back to match what we're doing. So, we've spent quite a sum of money making sure that we brought that back to historical.
I can remember going in there, was it, maybe last Christmas, Dr. Nettles put his trains in there, and I saw the floor, it's a dark, like a dark...
Well, they painted it, but it'll be, if you've been in Casey's dwelling, Flores, you'll see we refurbished those floors, they're absolutely breathtaking, but there were several places that we had to try to match the wood from the rot and the, just, where it was neglected, I mean, it was literally falling in. And so, we, an Amish guy who had 100-year-old wood, that's where we got it from, so, to match it, I mean, and it's just the...
Six twenty-seven.
Thank you. So, I mean, we really have tried to, I mean, it's 100, from what I've gathered from the research, it's 127 years old, and we tried, the ceilings are gonna be remaining the same, we exposed the brick, so, I mean, we're trying to keep it as original as possible.
So, to that point, Michelle, so the only thing really that's getting the, you say construction phase of it, is just the front. Traditionally, you see a big glass window there. The only thing different, basically, you'd be seeing outside of the refurbishment and all the, the old stuff is the two, the two doors, basically, and you said a new awning.
And what is this, for people that are watching, what is this going to be, this business? Can you not say yet?
No, I've just, I've even heard people that don't know that I own it, you know, say, "Oh, yeah, it's a new wing restaurant." And then I own me and three, so, you know, what, take your pick, I don't know. Actually, it's gonna be an event space.
We're hearing what you're, just my thing, I mean, I didn't know how much old stuff was in there, so we're talking about, seems to be everything's being kept. I don't, refurbished with the wall on the right with the brick, the floors...
The ceilings.
The ceilings, and the brick is still being, so the brick, the red brick and the top and the red brick on the skirt on the side is gonna stay red like that?
That's exactly the same, yeah, we're not touching it, not painting it, it'll stay the same.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have, I don't necessarily have a problem with that knowing that, I don't know what else, I don't know, but I don't necessarily have a problem with it. If that's the overall plan, do you think this may be the final plan of it, Wade?
This is the final plan.
Any other questions? Comments?
Are those three lights, is that what they are?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion that we accept the plan as is? Now, I will say that it has to look like this, it cannot change again because it...
The only thing that will change, like we talked about in our previous meeting, will be our sign that'll go on there, which I've told you, I'm working alone with Scott Irwin and...
I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure, like, this is the final...
Well, this is a rendition, I mean, this is an architectural rendition, so, you know, who knows what brand light fixture that is?
Well, I mean, I know, but this is aesthetically what it will look like, I'm not saying, yeah.
Your sign's going above on the brick?
Yes.
I'm just saying, we can't approve this and then it end up looking like, you know, they're making a change and all of a sudden, there's a accordion door, so...
No.
This is what we are going to...
That's it.
Make, okay. All right.
I'll make a motion, we accept the rendition of the current plans of the 110 South Main Street.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Mycel?
No.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes.
What do you think you may be done with that?
I'm saying the first week of January, but we're really hustling, so...
And again, you said this is gonna be what?
An event space.
Okay, so that passed. Number eight on the agenda, is there any other city business?
No, but I will ask Lieutenant Knighton, for the tour of homes, being, I know Asher lives up there, too, but they go outside of that. Going out from the houses on 230 is worse than coming in on 30 to those houses, so I don't know, and I don't, I'm not a police worker, but the more we can put something at the bottom of those, foot of those two hills on both sides, let people know that people are coming out there, it gets for bad, that's a bad intersection.
Yeah, coming up the back of 30.
Especially, you know, times we pull out of there, we have to roll down a window to hear cars are coming, type of deal, you just, it's for, because there's gonna be a lot more traffic than ever comes up there.
The chief said there's a pull-off right there at the top, sort of in the flat spot, and so he would be there with his lights on, so hopefully, people will... So hopefully people will pay attention to that. I'm not sure.
No, I'm not a police worker.
Well, I asked, and, and he can, we can, he can always make adjustments as needed. Um.
Ashley can flag traffic.
Yeah. I, I don't really have a mayor's report. Is there any other city business? The fire truck is here, police, all of the candy cane buddies have been adopted.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, so we had like twenty-four yesterday and they were all gone this morning when I got here, so that's exciting. Um, lots of families that are gonna be helped with that, so I'm excited and thankful for everybody um, that, that took a, took a child off the tree and provided Christmas for them. Like I said, I don't really have a mayor's report, other than it's just been, it's been kinda stressful the last week and a half, I'll be honest. But I'm one, one month in and we're making progress, I feel more confident and I want to always thank the staff. I don't think people really understand the depths of service that our staff exhibits and the love for Columbiana that they have. And without all of them and their support, I would not have, our, our town would literally fall apart. So I'm very thankful for all of our staff. Announcements, Ally's already done the announcements with the parade, um, Christmas tour of homes, the artist market, things like that. We don't really have anything else, so at this time, I will open it up for public comments.
Lisa?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I wanna say something.
Sure, the floor is yours.
Made a couple of bullet points, so maybe I won't lose my train of thought, keep y'all here all night. I've talked to Lisa about this, it's been quite a while since I mentioned it to Ashley. I think I may have talked to Charlene, I don't wanna call anybody out, 'cause, I mean, this is not a complaint or anything, it's just something I want. Y'all to consider, as a vendor, uh, I wouldn't call myself quite a small business, a micro-business maybe, and a couple of other friends that set up with me sometimes, um, we have business licenses and we've been told that as long as we have the property owner's permission, a business owner or manager, we can set up inside of the city limits, and we've done that. We've been allowed to set up at O'Reilly's multiple times, they're very helpful. They have recently stopped food trucks from setting up there, corporate has had them stop that up. So I think we might be on the chopping block soon. Kelly has graciously let us set up on her patio a couple of times during events, um, but that's not sustainable for her or us either one. We've inquired about Pigley Whitley, um, we were told that we couldn't use their property. And I'm not calling them out, I'm just saying we're trying to ask people. Of course, the prime location would be the courthouse overflow lot. It's a designated spot for food trucks, but when we've inquired for our uses vendors, we've been told that we have to call, um, I think Stephanie at the county manager's office. I've tried that, someone else has tried that, we're not getting callbacks. Last weekend, Robin set up Red Hill Church, she's a reed sucker there, she tried to get in touch with Chad's office, couldn't get a callback, she took a chance and set up anyway. So, I don't know if y'all could be an intermediary, an intermediary, whatever, for us as vendors, like you do for the food trucks, because thus it designated a place in the city ordinance for the food trucks, yet it's the county property, so y'all apparently reached some sort of agreement with them. If y'all could do that for us, that would be great, um, if not.
I don't wanna interrupt, but you say, then you're talking like a pop-up shop, like a tent, tent, tent with a table or tables, like a booth?
Yeah, a tent.
How often do you do that?
Uh, not very often, 'cause we don't have anywhere to do it.
That is a problem.
And I'm not gonna do it a lot right now, 'cause it's too cold. But in the spring and summer, we would like to do it more often, weather permitting. Now, with the county overflow lot, the city also owns part of the parking lots around the art center. So if we can't work out something, or y'all can't work out something for us, perhaps we could use the city parts of the lot, obviously, when there are no events at the art center.
We'll, we'll look into that, 'cause I, I want you guys to have somewhere to be able to set up.
Circle area up there, um, and that was mentioned once upon a time by other administrators for the food trucks, that that would actually be the preferred location for them rather than the county park, I don't know. We want something that's accessible, safe, visible, and the city owns that circular part up there. So that, I mean, we could come off of, what is it, Mill Street, on there. We love the overflow lot down by the sidewalk, 'cause that's
Sure.
obviously visible, and we do have business licenses, I do have sales tax license. I submit a sales tax report every month, most months it wouldn't buy y'all a cup of coffee, but I have before. So, and I realize y'all don't want yard sales and that kinda stuff, but we have a business license and sales tax license. We just like an accessible place, and obviously, we could call and say, hey, we want this time of day, you know, and make sure there's no conflicts at the art center or the city or something like that.
Sure.
We just need it.
We'll, we'll follow up on that, I, I will, yeah.
An accessible, safe place.
Sure, absolutely.
O'Reilly's has been great to us, but I'm afraid we're on the, getting close to the chopping block out there.
I will follow up on that, okay.
Okay.
I wonder why that food truck wasn't there anymore.
Um, any other public comments?
I kinda wondered why the food truck was there instead of the food truck designated lot too, but I didn't ask him.
Any other public comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Randy Glenn, I'm the one that was meeting on about earlier. And, uh, I just want to kinda explain to you what the city has done to me. I'm an entertainer, been doing it all my life. I've never been fired. I had a complaint, well, almost had a complaint. About eight years ago, Dr. Hanley was mayor, and he called me the morning after our first dance at the Rick Building, and he said, "A lady called in to make a complaint," and I told her that he was in charge of all the complaints, to come on down and fill it out, and she could sign it, and then open the investigation. I wanted that, hung up. So I've never had a complaint. I ran an ad on Facebook about playing their Black Friday dance. This is in Center Point, at the Our Lady of Lords Catholic Church. They have a school, and the gymnasium is the dance floor, big dance floor. So I ran the ad, and I'm, did you read the, did anybody read it? Okay. Black Friday, I don't know who named that day Black, but it offended people. I guess it did. If I said it does, so, I said, we're gonna, I don't know, I guess we're gonna play black music, maybe dance like blacks. Now, I think a lot of the people up here don't know what I'm talking about, they just haven't been to dances. There's, there's differences. There's soul music, it's played one way. Black music can be played different ways. Chuck Berry is a good example of that. Oh. Trying, thanks more, you, you got all different kinds. Anyway, that's what I was talking about. And it was ran for Our Lady of Lords in Center Point. Clung down was not mentioned. But the mayor wants to fire me forever. That's kinda crucial, I think. I didn't get the first complaint from Center Point, not one. Dr. Hanley told that lady to come down and sign the complaint, but she, she wouldn't do it. The mayor says my phone's been ringing all, blowing up, I believe you said. I wanted to know who it was. I don't know, she won't tell me. I thought I had the right to face my accuser, not here. That's my complaint with the city. I think it was mis, mis, misdone, the whole thing. This is not Center Point, it's not Our Lady of Lord. I ran the clung down I had after that, just letting you know I'm playing supposed to this coming Friday night at the Rick Building. Not now, not forever. I'm seventy-three, never been fired in my life. I have now, forever. Thank you. That's a good deal you did there. That's how I make my living. I can't do that now. We got people coming from down where the casino is, out from Montgomery. Door, they come on a regular basis.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna stop you right there because you just spoke a mistruth about our conversation.
Well, you did. I think I'm entitled to that too. I mean, how do I know anybody complained? I haven't seen the first complaint.
Okay, your, your Facebook post is offensive, and if anyone would like to read it, I will have it up here. I would prefer not to read it across
I wish you would.
the live stream.
If you've never been anywhere where they play music.
I have the floor now, thank you, Randy, you've had your time, you've had, you've had three minutes, so. I, I asked Randy to come up because his Facebook post was very offensive. This is 2025, your Facebook post was offensive. It can very, very well be taken. It is socially unacceptable, the things that you said, and as the city of Columbiana, we want to do business with people that are all-inclusive, that everyone is treated equally, everyone is treated fairly. That is my job. If we have complaints, sir, we, that, that, we should not.
You gotta complain about an ad in Center Point.
The very next post said Columbiana in our address.
Did you say the next post?
I've, I, listen, I have already, I have already discussed this.
Yeah, I know you haven't, you haven't made much sense either.
Mr. Glenn, I think it's time to sit down. I think it's time to sit down. I, here, here, here's the thing, is that, one, we're not firing you for making a living, that is not the question. And we're, we're, no, 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 we're not firing you for making a living. We at the city of Columbiana, if we choose to rent facilities, that is our decision, and they're not discriminatory, they're not, they're all-inclusive, they're equal opportunity things, but at some point, if the city decides not to rent a facility to anybody, that is the city's stance. And it's not that we're firing you for making a living, but as I told you in that room in there, words have consequences with everything, whether you agree with it or whoever agrees with it, words have consequences. And I hate that it's, that it, that it happened, I hate that it's come to this in a public forum, but if anything else that I can say, that words have consequences, and we're not firing you for you making a living, not, not, we, we, we are postponing you to have an opportunity to play at one of our facilities, there's a difference.
Don't you think it's some kinda defamation on me?
At the end of the day, sir, these are your words.
For being racist?
At the end of the day, sir, these were your words, these were not my words, they weren't the city council.
You don't know how to interpret them.
Again, I would encourage anyone to come forward and read this, these are his words.
Those are my words.
They are offensive and they are right here, I don't feel comfortable reading them out on live stream. And as the city of Columbiana, we have the right to refuse who we do business with. So if anyone fired you, sir, it is yourself. So, if you want to misconstrue something.
You did.
And the fact that you still cannot take any acceptability that these are your words, there are consequences to your words.
Did I not just say they were my words?
And you still can't apologize or say, I really am sorry that I, that I?
I'm sorry that it offended anybody, but I'm not apologizing, for the hell, I didn't do nothing wrong.
You did, sir, and the fact that you still can't say that, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
You don't see how you're hurting me. You don't, you don't see how people gonna look at, hell, they let him go for being racist. You stuck out on me.
No, sir, I didn't. These are your words.
Nobody else said anything about it.
Absolutely, that is not true, Mr. Glenn. These are your words.
Those are my words, y'all got that? Those are my words.
We do, thank you very much, have a seat. Is there any other public comment?
I wanna say.
Yes, sir, you're welcome to speak.
If he's being polarized for being racist, that's a serious thing, and it can go further because it can eliminate people from hiring him at, and I've been to his entertainment and enjoyed it myself. I even kept my sons to his entertainment and enjoyed it myself. But to polarize him as a racist, that's a strong word, that's a strong, it's not just something you can put under the carpet because this is a public thing here, this is, this is a city hall, it's a public thing, and public stuff get out of it, people do read. And once they find out, this thing could blow up a lot worse than you think it could, even from
That, that's exactly right.
The decision that y'all have made.
As the city, we one hundred percent support the fact that we are not going to support anyone that doesn't love everyone, isn't all-inclusive, and we don't want to.
I'm sorry.
If anyone, if anyone wants to read this, I would encourage them to.
If I had my glasses, I would read them, but I, I didn't bring them with me.
It is very social.
Or once it's, we're offline, so maybe somebody can read it.
I, I will be happy to read it once we're offline, live stream. It is very offensive. And they're his words, not mine, and there are consequences.
You want me to read it too?
Yes. So, is there any other, did you have anything else to say, sir? I didn't mean to interrupt you, if you have anything else to say. Thank you. Any other public comment? Well then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to.